One thing I wanted to mention before I pass Michael Ryan, and he's going to get into detail on all these elements that I just talked about. But one thing I want to talk about is the fact that the planning division, basically since 2005, we went on the same path. And that path was to push and encourage development in the downtown. When I say development, I mean height, building heights, and density. And with that, we knew what was going to come with it, which was traffic. We anticipated that that was going to happen. The planners knew that this was going to happen. And the point I want to get to across to you is that traffic isn't necessarily a bad thing. You're developing early before the downtown anticipates. And that's something that, like I said, we anticipated. In time, we feel like it's going to get better naturally. We feel that the more traffic there is in the downtown, the more people that are going to elect to not take the vehicle to the downtown, that are going to move into the downtowns, into condominiums, residential complexes that don't require parking. It's just one of those things where we feel like we're going in the right direction. We've been doing this since 2005. Planning has been on a mission. And we feel we're building in our core, we're building a city. And anyways, I just wanted to relay that to you before we got started today. With that said, I also do want to mention, from a legal standpoint, we are restricted from discussing any current projects that are currently being processed through the DRC or City Council. So we can speak in general terms about all these projects, but we can't speak specifically about any. With that, I'll pass it over to Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ryan, you're back, Deputy Director in the Community Development Planning Division. If we could get the charred plane a little bit up.
So what I'm saying, I'm seeing here is that sentence trying to find the transmitter. So something is not connecting properly. That's what it looks like. Well, I'm definitely not an IT expert, but spread some imagination.
So another point to bring up, what we'll be talking about, there'll be elements described at the downtown development vision. So we'll have an opportunity, they'll have a conversation, they'll be able to facilitate dialogue, both from the Commission and Council about these specific topics. So don't be afraid to interject, raise your hand, and pause discussions. So there's an opportunity to talk about some of these elements or issues that come up. It's very appropriate that we got this venue, that, you know, as well, thank you very soon, and I'll be partners here. We get a real life perspective to see how the downtown development is shaping up. So this really provides a good perspective as to where these projects are starting.
Quick thing, Ryan, is we're sort of trying to also work out some of the technological issues. Couple of council members were saying that they might like that we go around the table and just do some introductions to council and the DRC members. So maybe I'll just go ahead and start, and I'll then turn over to Andrew. Corey Woods, Mayor.
Andrew Johnson, I'm DRC, I'm the Chair. Very simplified, like a month into DRC. Welcome.
I'm from the Spears Commission.
I'm in the way, Commissioner.
Charlie, alternate number, Commissioner.
Robert, your call, Commissioner.
George, we're taking, Commissioner.
Brian, the city deputy.
Harrison, chapter city manager.
Gordon Garland, council member.
Harley Chin, council member.
Freda Haas, council member.
Joel Navarro, Joel Navarro, council member.
And I know that Councilman Rattiti is also virtual with the city as well, so he is. Right, thank you very much.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, perfect. Okay. We can hear you. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Have we been able to fix the issue regarding the slideshow? Nope. Okay. Well, I guess we have one in front of us in terms of, the only thing I'll ask before we go forward, those, I know everyone here at the table does have the slideshow, but is there any issue with people at home that not being able to witness what we're actually doing? Because they obviously need to see this. This is a public meeting.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can start describing the history.
Sure, I think that would work. Thank you.
So as Jeff had mentioned, one of our biggest projects that worked, kind of kicked off this conversation about downtown high rises in Tempe is the, what was called Center Point Condominiums. This is a case in 2004 that was approved for high rises, started construction in 2005. There was a stall of the economy in downtown in 2008, and the project was eventually finished in 2011, now called W6. Since that time, in 2006, the City Council at that time had worked together on drafting the downtown community design principles with the inclusion statement, and it also has what we know today as a height guideline map. It's a tool used to evaluate potential progress of heights, but it's not a regulatory document, a policy document in terms of that meeting with developers and talking about what height visions we have for the area. In 2011, we also did the Little Lake District, which was the street skate principles, getting more into the details of the design as it relates to the driveway function and the pedestrian ground, and what we want those streets and sidewalk foots to look like, including brick details, angle of parking, name it. Those are all elements of the development district area. And putting together some comprehensive treatments with how we use shade, trees, sidewalks, parking areas, all those are in the guidelines. We also had, in 2015, there was a retreat with council to talk about the town vision. And the reemphasis from City Council that we wanted height, height, height in the town link area. And we're not settling for compromising of smaller building projects of stiff frame construction. We wanted the high rise construction type. So that was great size back then. And then 2016, the DTA, downtown Tempe Depot, also did their own study of the local space plan on activating all those urban open spaces, so both public and private space, and how connectivity could occur through those locations and areas. That was part of that effort and was shared with Tempe and city staff. And then we had undertaken in our two and a half years, 2017 to 2020, our effort. They had some other supporting documents, but the essence of that was looking at updating some of those policies and guidelines related to master planning in the downtown area. Not a complete new effort, but we did receive the formal housing strategy plan out there and some other updates that we'll see coming forward regarding the general plan of the, and a career as a result of those efforts. And then today, we have 2023, 2024, we're doing the town refresh, which is bringing back to Mill Avenue, creating new street design, and new street design also along Fifth Street. And that's a renewed construction process that the City Council is working on today that hopefully brings some of that new attractive pedestrian environments that we want to see in the downtown. And now I can segue back to our presentation. So if you want to slide three. A pretty lot of slides.
Or the end. Shortest speed to go.
Questions? Okay, so with all these elements, when we talk about downtown and heights, densities, we have to consider all those factors that come with it, right? The building design, are those streets walkable? Do we have the right circulation and connectivity? You know, do we have restoration in mind for those buildings? Are we creating those unique places in downtown? It's, you know, it's just, we're not putting one site or one lot. We actually need to look at the fabric of the whole entire downtown as it looks to complement one another. Well, the car is another important element to how we shape our downtown. And then with that, the retail and housing options to consider. There's only three types of high rises you'll see in downtown. You'll see hotels, you'll see office, and you'll see residential housing. So it's important to factor in, you know, what those types of urban densities bring in the location area of the city. Most of our office high rise development is in the northern part of the city, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. But the next slide. So this is from our community design principles diagram that was accepted by council in 2006. This has various different color iterations, and I know you've seen recent development projects share this information in part of their slides. We talked about areas of urban core that have heights up to 300 feet. We've got the Mill Avenue District that has special unique step backs, recognizing some of the historic characteristics of three story buildings back in the days of Tempe Old, and then recognizing some of the buffer areas in our neighborhoods and respecting some of those transition areas as we get closer into some of our neighborhoods that are close to downtown. So this is a context map. It's not the end all be all. We've seen projects see and get brand heights higher than some of these locations. I gave the example of the Tempe Depot where we had got to Heritage Core because they had a historic building there. We didn't have local destination on the site, but we were able to work with the developer on serving that Tempe Depot station and getting the high rise development out of the location site there. And the next slide. This is downtown heights inventory. So we received some requests from the Commission and Council members on understanding context for the area of downtown. So here we have basically an inventory of all building heights existing in downtown. The reading sites are indicating five building heights that are not yet built or constructed. So we can see some varied heights in there, 170, 221 upwards of 260 feet in height. And those are actually untitled through what we call an area development overlay process. So projects that either have entitlements that haven't started yet, or they might be a feature entitlement that might come in years to come, or in a different form or variation, we just don't know yet at this time. The pink areas are projects, sites that are currently pending and in review, with the exception of Sky Tempe Nuts now an approved entitlement site. But we see the pink area there of some of the development activity or currents, or I'm seeing right now, that's asking for additional height. We have this downtown heights inventory map. We're also creating a development density inventory map as well. And this will be part of practice that we want to share with the Commission and Council when an additional development project comes in, so you can compare what's going on in the committee or in those specific rooms. Any questions?
Just a quick note too, if you do have a question, just for Commissioners or Councilmembers, just please make sure to use the shared microphones in front of you so people at home can hear, and obviously people in the group as well. So if you do have questions, just feel free to get my attention, but I can call. Councilman Carl?
If Councilmember Garland speaking, we can't hear on the broadcast.
So my question, I wasn't sure if you wanted to go through the whole presentation, and then a question, but I do have a question regarding the last slide. The slide number five, should I wait till the end, or do you want to go, do you want to go through the whole thing first? And then go to slides, yeah, I think as well, we can talk about the slides and the both. Okay, okay. So my question is, so when I first got on council, Robin, your anonymous staff told me about the stair step process, and I had never seen enough until now. I've been wanting one, I've been asked, had asked for one, I'm not sure if I can ask the right example. I was just wondering if you could tell me, how did this map come about? Could this get started? Was this a process? Just some clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. So very similar to the process we have today. Council, as downtown committee at the whole, had study session meetings with staff. There was formulating of 3D model renderings and kind of forms looking at different variations of heights, and started to explore some of the areas of downtown, or the sensitive areas, or the areas where we could envision seeing more height or redevelopment occurring in some of these areas. And so there was an exercise that went into place in 2005 and 2006 that created this map and was just being accepted by City Council at that time as part of a policy document that we shared for the public. It's on our website at the location. Some of the areas has to do with treatments of Mill Avenue with step backs. Some of it has to do specifically with prior development agreements, like the area along the flower mill. We know there's a sensitive area in few corridors that need to be preserved or protected in that area. So that's a special study area that, you know, needs to take special analysis and evaluating the views from the deep preserved location.
So, okay, so when we get, so I like this document. I think this is really smart. What I was, what I was thinking about is having this document, and that our residents know that we have it, it makes it more important for us to be reviewing this when we are going to be looking at approving heights in, not so much density, because it's more height, because this is a stair step. And so when we get, I was thinking about this last night, when we get the information in our packet regarding developments that come to us, it has on there, recommendation from Stanford, it says, you know, recommend approval or not approval. For me, it would be okay, we recommend it for approval, but it's not, it's in the buffer zone, and that's not what we wanted. It would be nice in the past for me, now moving forward, is it, if it's possible to be able to see this. Now, I kind of asked you about that density map, where are all those other, the map of the cities, the buildings and where they're all going? It'd be nice to understand that we're able to look at this one also, because if we told our residents that we were going to be giving a buffer zone to the neighborhoods, we should be doing every single thing we can to make sure we are giving our residents the buffer zone that we told them that they could have. So for me, this meant it was a little too late on some of the things I think have already approved. But I like this. I'm glad we have this. I just think that we need to be paying our attention to this map when we make decisions. But thank you.
Thank you. And I feel like too, there has been some rethought and thinking about some of these location areas and reevaluating. And so there's an opportunity to change it, we know it is. It is not set in stone. All Caters such as yourself can look to change those plans. And that's where we want to get to the next issue, the kind of the next round of reiteration from this map is now we're developing what we're describing as a 3D model tool that we want to be able to have City Council and the Commission members utilize in their decision-making process.
That was going to be the point I was going to make, that I think, I appreciate what Councilmember Garland is saying, that I think this document provides a good baseline for which we can have conversations. But obviously, I think that that document predated each and every person on the City Council, meaning Joel and I, within the people who have been here long since 2000, so it was even before us. But I mean, obviously, it's up to us as not only the City Council, but the DRC to determine whether or not this is a document that we still think is relevant, is something we still want to adhere to, or if we want to make adjustments to this document based on what we see in the years 2023. But I agree with Councilmember Garland, it's good to know that this exists, and that this is what some of our residents may still be working off of. So when we get the emails or concerns or complaints, we kind of know probably why we're getting them, because they might be looking or thinking about this.
Next slide. I'm going to review. So the next ever, I want to show you is our 3D modeling of downtown Tempe. It's a work in progress. And we can look up the, what's that term, the 3D model. So they're working closely with our IT group and Stephanie Dietrich's been very helpful in setting this up. What we're looking at focusing on is basically mapping our downtown built environment. If you can see the A Mountain in the distance there, to kind of get yourself framework, if you can zoom in a little bit, you see the portion there of the Temple Municipal Hall building there, triangular form. This really is a way of identifying form based on height in its simplest form. We've got the existing buildings, which are the dark blue. The light blue buildings are the titled sites, but have not yet been constructed. And then our yellow locations there, those are ending projects that are in various different process stages at this time. So here today, we're at the southeast corner of University and Mill Avenue. Only center site there, location, and you can see in perspective, you know, you've got the built context to date from your windows here. As well, we've got this context map that kind of shows and illustrates those heights and forms that we're getting developed here today. We're working with our applicants to get these forms to be approved. A lot of it, it has a lot of complex layering to it. We're trying to streamline the process so that we can show the exteriors of the building without the complex forms of these building designs, and to be able to get into certain details and periods. So if we can move to the next slide, I've got a few V-shits I wanted to share with everyone when we're talking about this, this context of the downtown and building heights. So if you go to slide one. So using the same modeling, what we have here is, this first view is looking from beyond University, north down Mill Avenue. So as you can see, you've got this context of our Mill Avenue street skate, which has step back heights. Most notably is the High Loax Tempe project at the corner of Seven and Mill. So they incorporated that height step back into two tiered levels of 75 feet and 90 feet. And that building design respects some of those height guidelines on Mill Avenue frontage. And then moving off of that block buildings, as you can see, you get taller upwards of 290 to 300 feet in height in that location. Next slide. So this is a view looking from the Easton Campus down both Forest and Marlowe Avenue. As you can see, the context of some of those newer buildings that are not yet built. And you're starting to get some variations in the building forms, right? You've got some taller buildings, more centralized location there is, and other buildings that have, not the buildings themselves, but have skewed depending on different heights as they approach the ministry, which is beyond the eastern edges. And the next slide. This is a view range point looking down College Avenue, University Drive. So we have some prior entitlements there that being shown in building maps is Newton Center Site that had received approval for a 22-story residential building. And then we have in the background behind that building is a couple of new projects that is seventh in college, and then the Drum and House 211 East Seventh Street project site. We had to show the building form in a cube shape because there was some discrepancy with the overall height shown in relationship to some of this building. So we wanted to show the upper context of the maximum height, 314 feet. But there are variations to understand with regards to the mechanical bit of the house of the building and some of the step backs, separation from the property lands adjacent to these buildings. What we'll probably do next, go around to, is bring in some of the building forms along the east side of College Avenue as well. We've got those forms. We just wanted to emphasize focusing on some of the downtown on areas. And it's a work in progress, like I said, too. The next slide, you'll see there's, there's another site that was approved on the corner of Seventh Street College. This was a hotel site for 16 stories. And so that northwest corner, we'll show there that building form with that location that was previously tiled, as well as the University House on the southwest corner of the college in Veterans Way. That building is 19 stories. So this is going to give some perspectives of context. Show next slide. This is another view from the north, as if you were on, say, A Mountain, looking south down Marlowe and Forest, and some of the context with the existing built environment, as well as some of the proposed projects that are coming to future areas. And the next slide. This is a view from, if you would like, center from Center Point, looking down Seventh Street. So the street there, cross section there is Mill Avenue, looking down Seventh Street. So you can see how those buildings align next to the street branch along Seventh Street. We're seeing a lot of, most of the development activity occurring in this block area, that location. Okay, and then now we can swing back to the 3D model. Does anyone want to see other context and views? And what our hope and plan is to is to have this web-based map 3D rendering, further enhance it, and be able to make it accessible to both Commission and Council. When we have another new project coming, then we'll plug in the new project, let you guys be able to have a direct link to it, and be able to hold it around and turn it around yourself, and ask the applicants for some of these additional refined details to really show that street skate and context of the building with, with the existing environment.
Commissioner Reddick?
Thank you. In terms of the model, we saw the buildings are the focus in their masks. When we talk about density, height is key, but the alternate way to lessen density is have open space, plazas, parks, to enhance the pedestrian experience. I would like to see an element of planning and the model, look at downtown as a series of interconnected open spaces too, with the connections being the realistic width of the sidewalks, and then the plazas being the creation. It just seems that it should be part of the planning process, and it should get better in this system.
Good. Thank you, Sharon Reddick. We do have a slide coming up to talk, talk about that subject, open space. Anyone else? Commissioner Bill?
Ryan, is it possible with this, and I think you were trying to get into it, can we get street level views, like up Mill, you know, up the university, to actually look at what the experience will be for somebody who's on the ground there? Because we're looking down on a human city. You're getting there.
Yeah, absolutely, but really, it's, it's going to be generic. You're not going to get that additional context of street trees or furniture. What would likely be helpful is having our applicants take that Google Street View and superimposing their designer graphics into that context area. So then you can actually get a real feel for how does the, how does the pedestrian ground look like, and feel like with this project in street. Certainly have to recognize that if the more information, the more amount of detail in this, it's just, it becomes a very time-consuming, and it's very difficult to run this type of model in a 3D format that's accessible to the public. So that's why we try to show it in the simplest forms. Anyone else?
And I appreciate you doing that. I know this is still very much at the beginning stages, but I know one of the reasons why this was created was that there were members of council, but also members of the commission that were saying, we really would like to have an opportunity to see what this looks like currently, what it would look like moving forward. Because many times we feel you're approving projects as one-offs, but we're not seeing the entire vision of what we're trying to create. So I know this is sort of in its infancy, but I appreciate the fact that staff is working on really building this out.
Thank you. We can move on to the 3D slides and we're back to the presentation. And then we're back to that before your help on the separate. So now the next topic we're getting to is parking and traffic. I'll introduce one element of the current parking. So the city can be looked at three different levels or tiers of parking regulations. We have our citywide parking standards that have been around for quite some time. We've got some examples of what those ratios look like in terms of office retail and residential for veteran unit types. And then we've got reductions in our T U D or transportation overlay district that follows that. And that's that investment in reducing the ultimate loads of transportation. So there's approximately about 20, 25% reduction in some of those typical parking standards. We start doing ratios by the bedroom, like seven spaces, seven, five spaces per bed. And then office and retail based on certain size gets a reduction in some of the parking counts. Then we have in the downtown, the city center district, I was adopted in late December 2015, but in effect in 2016 is the city center downtown parking standard. And so this is where we've taken an extra reduction in the parking standards for sites that have commercial uses up to 5,000 square meters, there's no parking requirements. Studios and one bedrooms are 0.5 spaces per bed. And then as you get the higher bedroom unit ratio, it's like 0.3 spaces per bedroom unit. And then if you have a mix of uses, there we wave the guest parking. Another two, which we kind of got into discussion with some of these multiple areas is there's a requirement for a parking management plan that has the applicant identify how they intend to accommodate guest parking for their facility. So it really need to think about how they're managing the environment with the public coming to their state. Commissioner Brock?
Yes, my question is, does that work the same for ASU with the? I think it does with the beds per units, you know, downtown issues, so it isn't the same for the spaces.
I think she has dormitories?
Yeah, or yeah, like not even just some of the apartment homes that they have that aren't directly dormitories, but directly for ASU students. So isn't the same?
I was assuming that, I think that obviously if something is coming through our process and let's say someone's building a market area, you've got a student housing development that's on private owned land that would come through us, so then I think this would apply. But if they're building things on ASU land, they report back to the area, they report to regions and those projects would not come for us just the way that, you know, let's say the Omni Hotel or things like Mirabella, if ASU would not have gone, because that's on ASU land, now on city 10B land.
Okay, so I'm just curious about what is their parking? And do we have any information on that? Like, what is their?
I don't know if they do have a parking standard, but they've got facilities, parking location facilities that remind them of space. Commissioner Lloyd?
And I would just add that dependent upon the development, there's shared parking structures. So even here where we're at right now, there's a garage being built next door that's shared by the Omni and other facilities, including a dorm at ASU. So it's a variable, but they thought model is trying to come up with shared parking versus having parking specific to.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Tom?
All right. So since 2016, how does staff feel, which is actually working or not working?
Yeah, good question. When we first introduced it, we had a very large project request to reduction in the marketing standards. Actually, it was the old of there. The concern for that number, there might be some sweet spot around the minimum numbers. But what we found is there, there's still a need that they provide at least one space per unit so that there's a combination of someone that is interested in living urban and walking and biking to, you know, their local places and working in the environment. But there's still that need to give away a bar or signature, you know, out of the city. And they want to be able to have a space to hold and keep that car. The concern is if the lower number you go, the concern is that then maybe the housing uses are more geared towards student housing use where it's temporary or short-term living status, there's not an investment of staying in downtown. So even if it's an evaluating process and most of the projects have demanded the downtown parking standards. I'll also note too, actually, that the novice innovation board, they adopted the downtown parking standard as well. And next slide. Yes, Commissioner Bill?
Now, one of the, one of our casters, he means a question came up about a parking inventory, number of spaces per downtown. And do we need to have something like that, that's how many spaces are available? Requirement plus what's there, which goes back to the parking reduction, I think.
Good question. The DTA has this information and I think that would be very helpful information to bring that back to the future situations.
We've got a lot of candidates over here who'd like to come over and grab my mic.
Sure, here we go.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we maintain a constant inventory of what's available and what's currently utilized. So in the downtown, specific to what our jurisdiction, the downtown city authority of Mill Avenue District would be, we have roughly about 11,000 spaces. And when it comes to class A office space right now, we're seeing about 50% occupancy. And that's mainly due to the downplay or the aftermath of COVID and the reduction in some of the tenants that we see down here and work from home. When it comes to residential, what we're seeing is many of the residential properties have been built that have been built mainly for student housing, et cetera. We're seeing a lot more overflow from those properties that are requiring vehicle parking. So but luckily, right now, we have the inventory to do it. When we incorporate marine heights, we go all the way out there, not including ASU specific properties. We're currently managing just over 18,000 parking spaces in the downtown right now. And like I said, we're not hurting for occupancy at all as we were pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, we had a lot more traffic problems along the Rio Salado corridor. We were at 90-plus percent occupancy in our class A office parking properties. We don't overhave that problem right now, but as we'll talk about a little bit later, we're also looking at his institution, the Transportation Management Association, which right now we have the ability and the time to work on that. And then when things do come back to that level, we'll be more prepared to do. I hope that answers the questions about the inventory, but anything further?
GTA also tracks metered parking as well, is that correct?
Yes, we do. And in metered parking, we're down to about 541, I think 541 metered spaces because we've lost some due to light rail, due to streetcar, just developments in general. But when we look at occupancy on the on-street, we're roughly about 85%, which is right where we should be.
So just going back to kind of the shared parking model, has that been something that we've looked into in the past in terms of maybe minimizing some of the requirements on each development and then minimizing the other cars in each development? If there's some sort of shared parking within the downtown?
Yeah, and that's exactly why we reduce some of the numbers, especially the focus on commercial and blending the restaurant, bar uses into one category. So we're not requiring when there's a change in occupancy, say like from retail to restaurant, there's no additional demand for parking. We're relying on that captured market for parking that exists today. As of the point in time, I think we need to probably do a better job of showing where those inventories or occupancy spaces are filling up. So we can evaluate the downtown parking information collectively. And I think that would be helpful to share with the commission and council. Commissioner Lewis?
First of all, thank you for that information from DTA, that's very good. Do you, do they have an idea on the timing on the risk? When are these spaces being utilized, when are the majority of them being utilized? And therefore, what might be available for long-term shared car?
Are you referring to the metered parking?
No, it's a lot of thousand, 18,000.
Guess I'll bring Adam back on up. Could you repeat that question again for me?
Yeah, do you have an idea within this inventory of 11,000 to 18,000 spaces? When the, when spaces are occupied, for how long a period during the day? And with that, how many of those might be available, say, for long-term shared parking uses with presidential facilities?
Well, that's a great question. When it comes to on-street, none of them should be available for long-term uses. And from a transactional data, we do track that. We did not have live sensors anymore on-street, but within the garages, we do track occupancy. We track just about everything from the transient perspective, like number of transactions we're doing, the price per transaction, average revenue. And then from the monthly parking perspective, which is probably what we're most concerned with, we definitely look at that. We compare it by tenant because a lot of the lease language has changed over the past few years. Whereas we used to be in a very much of an oversell type situation where we get dumb cell spaces and things of that nature. But now fast forward to today, most of the lease language talks about pooling and parking. And what I mean by that, I mean that you may have 150 spaces that are assigned to you in a specific parking garage, but you want to have employees, 500 employees have access to their spaces, knowing that not all of those employees will sure up show up at the time. So we're tracking a lot of that, even in our gateless locations, we track that ability. So we have a cloud-based system that we deploy in six of our locations now that has real-time data that tracks that all the time. We're also looking to try to roll all of that together because what's kind of a little bit unique about downtown 10B is the city control is less than 10% of the parking, which is downtown. Most of it is owned and managed privately. So we do have the ability to get all of that data and put it together, which is helpful. And we keep looking at differing technologies that's going to allow us to combine that and push that out. But we're always happy to share that with anyone next.
Is that all?
Commissioner Brown? I have a question. Don't leave it inside. But I need your microphone. We're working on only one mic here. My question is, if you have that data post-COVID, since our occupancy rate has gone down, has the permanent demand percentage wise gone up or down? Do you see more, a less demand based on percentage of occupancy because of writing like that? Do you even have that data or can we kind of print those numbers?
Sure, we look at year-over-year demand data and how that changes. And I can tell you from our perspective, what we're seeing, we're seeing less demand. We are seeing more demand from residential parking, but we're seeing less demand from like your typical evening weekend type occupancy that you get down here. From the special event side of things, we still have very strong event demand for concerts and things of that nature. But it's leveled off, it's kind of like this past summer was slower than what we had hoped. And we're looking at different ways to move things around. There's no one that's needing parking that's not getting it down here. They just may not be getting it at the price they want.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Mike? Thank you. This is just a slide showing an example of a market tailor. They usually ask for about a 10% reduction in their citywide parking standards. But you see downtown, you know, we're getting actually about a 60% reduction in those parking requirements for a residential project that goes in downtown. Just show some comparison.
Right there, okay. So with that said, if we're sitting this right, residential, we're seeing an increase in people wanting more residential parking. But we are also getting developers that are wanting to decrease the market, my record, is that what you're saying?
We're bottoming out the sweet spot, but for the most part, the projects have been complying with the downtown standard.
Downtown standard, okay.
It just requires some minimum requirements so that they can provide more if they want to. Commissioner Garland?
I just look out, we started with probably like 20 microphones in about a box.
I think we're listening. So, you know, one of the things that I look at this is when we're trying to take density, people out of downtown, which is what we expected us to be able to do. It just seems to me that we should be doing less parking because we are trying to promote people to walk by, take less, take potential lights, let's do all of those things. It just seems like we need to, we should be looking at lowering the requirements that we have somehow. I would not want to put the burden on people on the street, parking on the street or anything like that. But it just seems like it would really help the city if we were looking more at trying to get people to get out of the vehicles and not to have the vehicles. I know we got to, we went to extreme, the colds happened, one single car over there, everybody over there is going to survive. It just seems like we need to look at or we should be looking at lowering size. I don't know exactly what that would be. I looked at your diagram for hours, it took me a while to completely understand. All of this and I'm trying to look at this information and put it toward a developer that we just looked at, a couple of the rooms that we had currently. And it just seems like there's got to be a way for us to be able to lower those parking, to be able to then lower these type of buildings that are the rules. It's just, just a thought, but I appreciate this information. It's really moving.
Thank you, Commissioner Garland. Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you. So generally speaking, that seems like what I agree with to, Commissioner Garland, is it seems that that could be the logical thought. However, then I think it's the catchphrase too that you said earlier, money. If we reduce parking on certain developments, then it's almost geared towards students, which is not what we're trying to achieve. So I think if we lower counter parking requirements, we need to determine where's our shared opportunities. And then also the other components of the development that maybe increase the quality, the character of the development so that it's attracting the 365-day residents that we're looking for without diminishing parking expectations.
Yeah, Commissioner Garland and Commissioner Brach?
I just wanted to do a follow-up. That's actually one of the next bullet points that I have on here and I do not, didn't know where to start it, but you gave me an opportunity. Then yes, if we didn't lower the requirements, wouldn't look like that would be an opportunity for students to go in there if it was not as many cars. And completely agree, I understand that. My peers, my notes are, ASU needs to start building more student housing. Instead of the big Nova Center, the big you guys just saw, the people said, holy spokes, why don't you build student housing? And we wouldn't, then we could, you guys could do that there and then there wouldn't be an issue regarding the students here or getting into these apartments, whatever else in the housing units that we have. Anyway, it's been on my mind for a while and I really think I didn't have the pressure of the issues you're feeling now. So thanks, welcome. We need more.
Commissioner Brach?
Okay, I was going to agree with you on that because it also makes it feel like when you're from North 10B to South 10B. When you're in South 10B, you feel like you cannot live there unless you have a car in that area. So it kind of limits people of middle age who does drive more than walk around to come into the north part of the town, part of the city. So we do, we have to have that balance back. So I do, I really think I also understand there's a lot of people still drive. And there's a lot of people who still drive, they may want to live in the northern part of the city. But if we start to take away the parking, they're going to feel like it's not, this is more for ASU geared towards it is. Because I hear a lot of people say, oh, well enough to be, that's all student housing downtown. So we don't want them to feel like they can't live in our corridor or downtown. But at least alone, there is a lot of people, especially our age, who still like to drive.
Downtown, Bishop Miller?
Down to you. Bishop Mila?
Thank you. Uh, this is exactly, I think, one of the conundrums that we're, this whole density thing faced. But yeah, there are a lot of cities in this country that can solve that problem. You know, I'm just into Washington DC and New York City. And you go into most of those places and especially in, in Washington, not Washington, but New York and Manhattan. They built an awful lot of large apartment buildings with virtually no parking. And the resident doesn't see, resident understands, if I have a car, I'm gonna find a spot in a garage within a couple of blocks where I'm the, um, my mother-in-law lives in a thirty-story residential building with somewhere between fifteen and twenty units per floor. And a private garage underneath it that has three hundred spaces, all of which are leased out, but not all of their leased people who live there. And the least cost per space there is larger than most people's mortgage payments in Tempe. So private garages, since we already have lots of them, probably the way to go. And if, when somebody comes in with a development, if they can, if the staff can work with them, uh, PTA and still work with these people to find spaces that are available, that are privately operated, it might solve a lot of the problems and get to what Commissioner Garland's talking about. Where we actually use the resources already.
Just, and I appreciate that with your remark, because I think that, you know, as we look at projects throughout the downtown area, and you try to think about how people think and convenience, it's, it'd be honest to hear this, well, there's no parking in Tempe. Well, I want the parking right front of the building that I'm going to, uh, is often what it seems like, you know? And then yet they can go this block down the street and park and, you know, walk, which, which is kind of the push and then we stay in New York. I agree with you. Um, but at the same time, this will never be New York, you know, in terms of walkability to where I work or multiple things that I need. Um, I think we're being a sample of it, which is kind of the, the balance of how do we negotiate that side, which I appreciate, and then the side of where we live at and people use their cars. So almost like California, you know, I'm gonna go to walk and I'm gonna drive. Um, so it, I think that, you know, kind of this conversation in my opinion is, you know, when you see another development that comes up and we know that we have a parking garage across the street, that's our opportunity to capture some of the, those things. And if you have that, um, uh, lesson of parking in one area and establish more parking, yeah. I think there's a balance where those locations are at. And then how do we make those things happen is kind of like, is a, a feeling.
Conversation on the parking topic. Next slide, we're gonna be talking about.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, just to introduce myself, Shelley Seider, I'm the interim engineering transportation director. The DRC last Tuesday. And so Ryan asked me to kind of cover different options, analysis tools that we have for traffic and managing it and what we can do. Um, next slide. So I thought I would start at the kind of most basic level, and that's at the top of this pyramid. It's a safety need study. And really that's just a local study that looks at, um, an issue or concern that a resident or a community member might have. And that's performed by, internally by our staff. It might be, hey, you know, we think we need a stop sign, or can you look at whether or not a signal is needed in an intersection? Uh, at the next level, um, it's called a traffic signal optimization study. And we look at corridors in Tempe, usually three to four a year, and we optimize the signal timing to make sure that we're moving traffic efficiently. Uh, sometimes it gets a little difficult in Tempe though, because our cavers tend to move, um, in the PMP, we're moving east and south generally. And so we have some competing interests there. But we do that to make sure that, again, we're staying on top of the traffic movement. And then what you guys probably see as referred to most, most often is the traffic impact study. And that is performed by a traffic consultant related to a development that is happening in Tempe. And it really looks at what, what are the impacts going to be on the surrounding street system? Are there adjacent improvements that the develop, developer development can make to help mitigate any impacts that, um, that might be occurring? And then finally, we have what's called a traffic simulation model. Um, it's more of a, uh, microscopic, but there's three levels. Um, and this is, the simulation model really looks at a high level of incorporating all developments, potential development that can occur, so the maximum development levels into a study. And it really gives our staff an idea of how traffic is moving. The difference though is this, it's not going to narrow down to that signal optimization for state safety need study level. It's more, it's broad and, and really just helps, again, helps us look at, um, traffic from a higher level. Next slide. So in Tempe, we do require, uh, transportation impact studies for developments, um, that are generating, uh, more than seventy-five peak hour trips. We have two different levels. The first is a level one TIS. It doesn't quite go into the level of, uh, analysis that a level two does. Um, so we look at, um, having the developers work with their traffic consultants to give us, again, studies that, um, on the level two analysis, it's a hundred and fifty or more peak hour trips. Now, if we feel like a development maybe is around that range or we want more information, we do ask, um, for these studies. And again, they look at an area that surrounds the development. How are the signalized intersections going to operate? Do we need, um, deceleration lanes into the development? Do we need sidewalk improvements? Do we need signals? It looks at, at that level of analysis to tell our staff what we can require, um, as, from the developer as the development needs to operate. Next slide. We also have incorporated what's called trip reduction plans. And so depending on the level of development that is occurring, you know, that table on the left there is very tiny. Um, so we don't require it for a development that's generating zero to seventy-four trips. Again, this is in the peak hour because that's actually when we're concerned, um, with the, um, level of congestion that might be occurring. But for, um, seventy-five to a hundred and forty-nine P R trips, we require a level one reduction plan. And what that looks at is, is that you can see on the right-hand side, we're doing different things like, uh, providing transit passes or building showers into, um, a commercial building. They get assigned a certain number of points that they need to reach that point level. So there's the ten-point level and then for a hundred and fifty or more trips, we require them to reach the twenty-point level. Next slide please. So I also wanted to just discuss briefly, um, what we can do with, uh, in working with the community on congestion reduction strategies. And really this five, um, area approach, it involves ensuring that our infrastructure, um, is built to add for the annual, um, traffic, implementing technology, operational improvements, transportation demand management, and, um, obviously get a convenient transportation system. We know that providing options is, um, a large part of how we are going to help with, uh, congestion reduction. Next slide. So this slide just kind of goes over some of those, um, mitigation measures. When it comes to infrastructure, um, you're all probably familiar with the improvements that we made at rural and university. It's a rather wide intersection, but we were struggling with moving traffic through it so that we helped those improvements, uh, were important. We also look at, um, incorporating bus pullouts. When we do this for development, we, we do, um, pedestrian and bike grade separation, so removing the conflicts between pedestrians and bikes and vehicles from the system. You know, multimodal improvements where we can build alternate paths or ways for, um, our community to get to wherever they're needing to go. And then technology, um, we've been moving towards what's called an adaptive signal control system. Um, on Reis Drive, we were lucky to get some funding from the Arizona Department of Transportation. And really that technology measures the level of traffic entering the intersection and constantly retimes the intersection. So it's responding to current trends. Uh, we also, uh, put in place, uh, a streetcar entrac system. So it allows us to track where the streetcar is, making sure that we're, um, moving in efficiently. Uh, we can also, um, in the middle picture there, that's our transportation management center. So we have cameras at most of our major, major intersections. We can make real-time changes as incidents occur. Or if we see backup and we currently have, um, a staff member who sits in the TMC during the AM and PMP. And then working with our fire department, police department to make sure that we're, um, moving incidents that might be on the lower level off the roadway system, also minimizing those peak hour barricade restrictions. We all know when we're traveling home at five PM and there's still barricades out on the roadways, that, that can be frustrating. And so we implemented timeframes where we require, especially on arterial roads, that they limit their work from eight-thirty to three-thirty sometimes, um, into the evening. And then the transportation demands, management strategies. Um, on the next slide, I'll talk about, a little bit about, um, and Adam spoke to this, uh, implementing a transportation management association, especially now as we're, um, building and we're seeing the traffic, um, increase. But we want to get to that before, before we reach that point. And then, uh, multimodal infrastructure, making sure that we have the first and last bi-hol connections. But we have dedicated services frequent so that people don't have to use, um, transit schedules to know when the next bus is going to come. They can just walk out to the street and know within ten to fifteen minutes, they're gonna see that next bus. Next slide. So just briefly talk, talking on this, um, we are entering phase two of our TM, TMA mobility hubs, um, analysis. We're working to develop, uh, an organizational model with, with, uh, key collaborators on, uh, advancing the TMA. We're also wanting to work with employers to make sure that those trip reduction strategies that I spoke about previously fit the different scale of employers and are really working to reduce trips. And then finally, advancing mode of building hubs where our community has options in one location, whether it's a scooter, an e-bike, uh, a shared, uh, car, um, that access to those, uh, mobility options are there and available to them. And that's my last slide. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Shelby, any more questions? Councilor Garland?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. So the traffic impact study that a development, that you're using for development, have we ever not approved a development? Because, uh, all of the ones that I have seen, like both of that huge traffic we get. So look, I've never seen one that's been denied.
I would say in my time with the city, I, I don't recall one that's been denied because of traffic or, and when I study. I mean, generally, the study isn't gonna tell you exactly what's gonna happen on the adjacent intersections. But I think, you know, you as council and the DRC probably look at a larger range of, it's when you're, you know, looking to, uh, look at the development, whether it might be beneficial to Tempe, but I'm not the lawyer, Ryan.
I was thinking, maybe one was denied and then the developer was told that and then they made adjustments and we saw it. Cause I've just never seen one that said it's denied because there's too much traffic. There are, you'll cause too much traffic.
There are communities that set a, um, level of service that they won't approve a development if it falls below. So it's, it's an A to F system. Um, say if it falls below a level of service D, um, they wouldn't approve it. We're not that community. Um, you know, we work to manage traffic in different ways. I don't necessarily think that, um, congestion is a reason to deny a project. So we've never set a minimum level of service.
And then the last question is, uh, the, you know, the trip reduction plan, I think is incredible. How do you, how do we follow up on that? So once we set a trip reduction program, uh, with a company or business, do we go back and check to make sure that they're doing the things that we want them to do? Get them a little start in town. Thank you.
That is a little bit more difficult because we do want to make sure that they are. And so we'll check at different developments. Part of the TM, uh, TMA that we're working on is really going to look at those follow-up measures too. Because I think that we can do more to make sure that, you know, we're working as a community and, and looking at those. It really is, it's going to be an effort. It's not just, you know, on part of the city, it's the developments, it's the community looking at all their options. So I think we have some room for improvement, but that's definitely, you know, the direction we're moving in.
Yeah, this is great information. The presentation was amazing. I was gonna say, there's so many moving parts, haha. But there really are, there's so many different things that happen. It's amazing that you're able to do and keep us moving to Tempe.
Then Commissioner Brach?
Okay, uh, my question is about, uh, transit. I know you were saying that you try to make it every ten, fifteen minutes that someone comes. Now, I know that, um, we do that like to our downtown, but when we go further out, like I'm thinking about my students and they always complain about, but it's trying to go to schools like at Corona and Argos, it's a lot harder for them to get from bus ride to bus ride. Because the farther we go stop, the less the buses. Um, so that frequency shouldn't be the same along the route. So say for example, Route seventy-two, which would serve Corona. Um, during the peak hours, it's on a twenty-minute frequency. Um, on Flintog, we do have the Route eighty. So they have changed that thing because it was, it wasn't like.
From end to end, it's going to operate on a twenty-minute frequency.
Okay.
But certainly something we want to improve even more, right? Twenty minutes is, yeah, we're okay, but we would really like to look at ten to fifteen minute frequency.
I was thinking possibly they, they talk about the whole, the orbit too, um, like bringing that further out south. Because a lot of the kids can't utilize it after a certain part of the city, so it cuts off. And, you know, there's kids who live in the north, they go all the way to school in the south and vice versa. But they can't get from there on the free bus orbit that they have. And we just, you know, that would be something. Cause I know some of the kids who use it don't live in the city in Tempe, so they don't get the bus, free bus pass. So they need to use the orbit to get, um, a part of their pass, part of the way to the school and they can't use it all the way. So I'm just looking at it. We can think about extending maybe some of the orbit out a little bit further for some of the people out and stuff.
It's definitely our goal to raise bandwidth. I'm excited to hear what you're for.
I'm excited to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Shelby. Appreciate it. Very interesting. Ryan, back to you.
Thank you. Getting back to some more of our, um, traditional elements of design guidelines. So, um, wanted to touch just briefly on a street scale and size. So we know when we look at the architecture, we know the designs, but you know, what's also important is how the building interacts with the, uh, ground, the, the ground plane. So how are the buildings responding to dividing, um, into these buildings? Are they out closed or are their entrances generating residence into these buildings? Is there adequate shade? Do we have enough, um, landscape treatment as part of the amenity space in those sidewalk areas? So these are some of the design elements that we need to look at and discuss when we're getting the urban treatment in some of these building designs. You know, the building may not look the same on the ground plane as it does above. You, you may just see the, the similar, um, building form in the level above. But it's important to have that additional attention to detail at the ground level that is really is where the pedestrians interact. Any questions on this topic?
Questions, anyone? Comments?
Okay. We're on the same page. Uh, next slide. Um, so as well as design guidelines, who got to recognize our historic Miller Avenue and some of those design treatments. It's not a one size fits all. There's definitely unique buildings out there that we need to, uh, recognize and respect, uh, the heritage of these building sites. We have a large, uh, congregation of historic buildings near Fifth Avenue, part of the street and Force Three. And some of those buildings need to recognize that there's some historic height, scale and details in those. And we want to recognize and maintain those aspects as, as part of our heritage in downtown. Some of these building sites do have historic sign easements, some of the largest on the national register. But it's important to recognize that we still want to keep and preserve our history in downtown. Not everything is gonna be redone. That's what I'm saying. Next slide. So, um, the biggest topic we probably have, uh, discussion of the design alliance is, is building interior. So, um, we think of a hire as, sometimes we think of an office, right? It's difficult in office. Um, but what we want to talk to you about. But what we want to talk to you about is some of the materials we're seeing in some of our building designs. We're trying to go away from the majority of an EVA struggle building and want to make sure that we can provide variation in context and uniqueness in the building designs that is not just one material. That there's a complement, complementary of both maybe administration and solid materials, color accents, unique variations that kind of you can identify that, okay, that building is in Tempe, but not just in every, every city you see. So I think we're, we're at a point where we're wanting to expect the buildings to do more than what we've been seeing recently. And we just want to see here from the Commissioner to Councils to where do we push the envelope a little bit more and expecting some of those good quality design.
I was just really quickly, Ryan, the Council for the bar. I'm very much more patient to make sure that developers are building with higher quality building materials. I mean, these are buildings that are going to be there for 20, 35, 45 years. And they need to be things that will stand up the test of time and that won't update it in 10 years. I think one of the challenges sometimes, and this is not necessarily about materials, but it's about building design in general. Because sometimes I hear from, actually I hear it all the time from residents. I'm worried that a lot of the projects that are getting improved aren't iconic. That's a term that gets used a lot. But one of the challenges of that is what's iconic to one person may be ugly to the next person. You know, Councilor Everdondo Savage and I used to have this running debate when she was our council about, I like things with a lot of color and things to look very interesting. And she would say, I like things more beige and a little bit more neutral. Because I don't like that thing that sort of sticks out like a sore thumb. And you may think that's iconic for her, but I think it sticks out. I'd rather something that's a much cleaner design that maybe looks like the other things that we're building. So I think the challenge in this conversation, sometimes not necessarily even when it relates to materials, is how do things actually look? Because what might look great to one person? And that someone says, I put a lot of money into this. I want to make it look really interesting and really unique and I want it to stand out. Someone goes, oh my God, that stands out and I don't want that. I think that's ugly. So. Councilor.
Yeah, thank you. And then to that, that's kind of the things that I'm probably trying to figure out. You know, like looking at those three buildings in that diagram, I kind of migrate to the center, the center vision. So it's, 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 you know, the opportunity to have an artistic, you know, kind of side of design. The opportunity of, of doing something that's, that's part of the elements. And I think that I mentioned the Councilor Garland on a project that was going, being proposed off of university. The fact that, okay, you know what, you have a sensitive site that, you know, relates to the culture that we had it on here. Why not flares of some sort of, you know, taste to the building, something that's unique, something that says not Scottsdale, but says Tempe, you know? So it's kind of trying to figure out those elements and trying to push those elements. But at the same time, though, too, I think that collectively, you know, when we're talking about design, we got to talk about it at the beginning before development comes in and says, okay, here's what we want to do. We got to kind of like already have this kind of decided here at the table, you know? Yeah, we want some unique design. We want some artistic flair. We want some of these elements. And we can debate on what's good or bad and what, how it looks. But we can, we can say that these are what we're trying to get to. We can also say depth within their offering, especially for developments that hopefully become ownership. They have a deep enough patio, not just a typical patio just to walk out and look down, but a patio to look at, to be experienced in the elements. So kind of thinking about the higher end of what we have, because at the end of the day, we don't have too much, you know, going around. So we got to be, we got to be choosy about what we have and what we can get out of it. I mean, I think that's something that we need to express.
We got a Councilor Chin and Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan. If your question that I'm hearing to us or to me is, we want to push and encourage better building materials and better design, something that is more uniquely Tempe. Yes, then my answer is yes, absolutely. Please do so. The challenge may be that there may be someone who builds a building and has built something in Phoenix and then turns around and submits a design that's very similar looking here. It's okay to push and say, yeah, you did that. What about here? Here's what we're looking for and we expect this type of material. Then I would be fully supportive of that.
Commissioner Miller?
Ryan, you have just spoken using my words. I'm serious. I don't, years ago, there was something called the Design Review Board. Some of you may actually remember that. I actually chaired that for five years. Some buildings that we approved are still here and are still good. And some of the ones that we approved, they'd be nauseous now. And I really am sorry that we approved it. And there's one in particular, and I won't mention it, but anyway. And that was my fault because if I was the Chair of the Newford and I voted for them, I have never looked that down to this bit. We can look out here and there are buildings that are interesting. And there are, I don't know if you spoke here, this one's good, this one's bad. There are some that are actually pretty good and there are some that are pretty blue. And we don't want it. So it's uncommon on us as development review to say, this is good, this is not so good. It's incumbent upon staff to really put, like used to be done and say, you can't do this here. You may do it in Mesa, you may do it in Chandler, you may do it in Phoenix, but it isn't good enough. So thank you for doing that and best of luck, because hopefully we'll support you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Thank you, Councilor.
I agree with what Chin just said, but for me, I don't know what looks greater, what's the best until you show me and see it. I am not, this is not my bathroom. I just know that when I've looked at projects, some of them that I've looked at, it's like, goodness gracious. Another screen in front of parking garage. I hate that. I, I don't like the way it looks. I don't like the way it looks when I drive by all of these. If there's anything that I don't, that's my thing is I don't like saying all that. I'm not willing to get rid of parking. There's not a lot that we can do without, but I, I mean, I like things and people are showing us up here. And I do, I do agree, we could push back a little bit. We wanted something a little more unique. But this isn't my expertise and I, I just want to just try to kind of continue to help you. But I know it's easier. You've got seven council members and you've got the DRC and we're all a little bit different. And one might like one color, another likes another one. This has gotten really hard job for you guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. So I think we're all heading in the right direction that we need to, I think, raise the bar because developers want to hear. So we don't need to obviously lower the bar. And, you know, of course, it's subjective in terms of what people prefer. Do you think we should try to drill down to, we think the quality and character is that we want to have residing in our city for the next several decades? And, you know, something that isn't just rubber stamped or getting as many units as possible, but actually being thoughtful, providing some character and quality.
That's worth.
I think this is, also, I do, I trust, I trust you guys because I'm not an architect either. But I also would say that I would love that everything is designed, is going to, ability, accountability too. Make sure that it's sustainable, like we have more top, if we can afford it, to have walls that are more padded. So the heat will stay in in the winter, the air could, the air will stay, you know, coming in the summer. So it can lower people's bills, utility bills. So just be more cautious about how the builders build it too. When it comes to what they build, also when it comes to sustainability. I know we do a great job of that, but I just want to make sure that all of our projects are sustained in comes to sustainability.
Commissioner Tom?
Yeah, I think we need to provide these developers some good guidance early. So they're not coming to us and then they get run through the wringer essentially. And, you know, identifying materials, being able to provide materials that they want to use. Sample of those materials so the Commissioner, Council can feel, touch it, identify. I think part of the problem that we may have is, we may have that standard time. But as they value engineer that building, you know, the over is going to, the price community is ultimately what's driving that, that development. So we may ask for super nice, nice materials, but as they start to value engineer that, that building and crunch numbers, those standards may start coming down. And I don't know if that's through stipulations or what, that we hold the holdings of the materials that we see. Is that what happened?
Councilor.
Do we not, do we have some of this information, the details of what we want the buildings to look like in character area for downtown? So I know there is a downtown character area that talks about textures and colors and things like that. Do you guys refer to that also?
Yes, yeah, we do have some sections on there. A lot of it is just tools. It's not specific design guidelines, but we can touch on that anytime as, as sort of, as our inspiration to say, look, look to draw your building to do in some of the more than, than they're going to listen. And to what, you know, when we talked about this before, you and I, we're all continuing to encourage our developers to meet early on with stakeholders. I know at times they meet with council, every time we want to invite staff to be involved in this, we can, opposition. Be happy to attend. And we're trying to make sure that we get further into, uh, pre-studies such as meeting with developer with the commission. So that you get an earlier chance to provide some commentary about the design. And it's really important to get that feedback rubbing onto the process and appreciate it.
Also, I'll just say this, this is a point, Christopher, privilege. One of the things I know when you first took over the department, one of the first conversations that you and I had was about the EVA, you basically said, look, I just think we have to start demanding higher quality building materials and the developers begin to bring us up like this. You know, we need to know that the council has our back when it comes to pushing back and saying, this is not of the level of quality that we want in our downtown because it's frankly not going to last and it's not going to look good in 10 or 15 years. And that was probably the first conversation I had with you when you became Director and you brought it to me. Not the only way around. I just wanted to say thank you for actually doing exactly that and getting to push for much higher quality, much higher standards.
I appreciate it, Mr. Miller. Yeah, we're not here to be able to ask you your opinion on materials. I know that's, that's the staff's job to continue with great projects. I do appreciate your support. I do appreciate your support in giving us that ability to push harder with your developers. We've had several conversations in the planning division here just as a reset. And talking to the planners and saying, hey, let's step it up, let's ask for more. You know, I think we have some fantastic architecture in the city of Tempe. Just looking out the window, there's a variety. And I think varieties is spice of life. It's varieties is spice of what we're looking for in downtown architecture. But there are those buildings that we could do better and there's no doubt about it. And we can just start requesting more as the staff. And it's just nice to hear your support and that was one thing we wanted to get out of this meeting tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Senator.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And I appreciate that. And that's a good recommendation. As we look up this one, I mean, it's what a magnificent view, you know, and I know there's going to be some added fill-ins, but you have the opportunity to go to the fill-ins to have some uniqueness to add to those views. And I think that also we have a challenge too on what type of project do we want? When we talk about affordability, there's some give and takes that we're going to have to talk about it before. What if the city is going to be helping out those give and takes to make that quality look a little bit better? So I do understand that and I think that's the challenges that we have, you know, as, as we go through those processes. And what we're getting and how we're getting it and some of the give and takes that we go through. So challenging, but it's fine.
Commissioner Tom?
I just had one more comment on the pedestrian facades. One of the challenges of my former career in APES is when we had public utility easements on properties. And we wanted to have that pedestrian shape. One of the things that we were able to work out between development, planning and whatever control that easement was, being able to have the movable sections. So if we had a structure over easement and that utility didn't get it, that portion would be removable in a smaller section rather than having to move the whole thing. That way we still had that structure overhanging, creating shade for pedestrians, not just using trees or whatever. I don't know if that's possible or if it's something that we can discuss.
Yeah, thank you. Good topic. And actually, it's APS controls the majority of the downtown in terms of where the utilities tend to go. And it's going to be a little tougher to find the right spots and locations for them. Where we prefer to not have them on the street, right, because then now we don't have the interactive building. And sometimes limitations with, with shade like you described. Now APS is no longer allowing those locations on the public alleys. So now what are they going to do? That the utility infrastructure is responsible for the furniture, the buildings are portioned. Well, yeah. That would be nice.
Very great. Anyone else for the comments or questions on this slide? Seeing none, I guess we're going to go step backs.
Next slide. You know, the United Stepbacks. We've got some, you know, definitely variation in, in the ways and forms. It's important to recognize there's context to the area and location of sites. You know, we're dealing with a lot of different sizes, different projects that have different sizes that, when you're, when you're talking about maybe a two or three inch site, you know, there's opportunity to master plan and have separation and open space and scale in the building designs. And that brings us a little more, more context and location areas. When you've got some of these smaller sites, unfortunately, sometimes they have to maximize some of the space to be able to get the parking circulation with the buildings. And so in certain areas where you have that, sometimes there is no step back shown in there. And that might be a way for some of the smaller sites, but looking at the bigger context and making sure that there's still an opportunity in other areas to continue that open space and place making, that there's still some opportunity for connectivity. The urban, the urban centered border, although there's sometimes a step backs that can be done in some of the pedestrian mode designs, but where we have some bigger, bigger sites and bigger locations, we can get that step back relief from the, from the design of it. Next slide. Open space. Okay, so this is an important factor in everything in the downtown. So we've got a great opportunity that we're, we're next to our biggest open space venue location, so Tempe Town Lake. But we also have pocket private locations and open space throughout the downtown. And it's kind of important to maybe recognize and do an, out there exercises. So it's a diagram that was pulled from the BPS for open spaces. Looking at, analyzing some of these locations and how they intertwine and connect with one another. It's important to recognize that these spaces are, are moments in time. Sometimes they're private, sometimes they're built in the public. But really is an opportunity to kind of introduce areas that are far from the street that really have an opportunity to make that place maintenance space and locations. I like the comment that Reverend talked about is, is if we can do a map exercise that kind of shows some of that green space of sidewalk connectivity and where those locations connect to these, to these open space areas. Some of the important elements that we try to emphasize in, in some of our design work is, is reactivating the public alleys. And one big public alley connection we have is from College Avenue to Mill Avenue, which is between Fifth Street and Sixth Street, I'm sorry, Sixth Street and Seventh Street. There's a complete alley connection from College Avenue all the way to, to Mill Avenue. And we want to continue to embrace that and activate that area and space that can be utilized for pedestrians and vice versa.
Yes. And there's a certain percentage that, that says when you have the community, the downtown community should have this much of a movement saving percentage in the rest of the city or the whole town. Is there some type of percentage or are we just lucky that we have these great businesses?
Yeah, there are some models that say how much you should have in, in the conservative environment. There's not a full requirement we have in our downtown district. It's 100% lock, which serves step backs. In some of our, in our design requirements, for the wire that's putting a straight down or anything. But the greater opportunity you have is to create this space, spaces, locations, is looking at having tall, you know, buildings. So higher as that kind of visibly, if you have a larger site where you're doing that, that's flexible. But we're trying to emphasize it's getting breaks in those open spaces and we can be moments where we're, you're. So we can be moments where we're creating the break into the building facade and, and allowing people to come in and transpire for those spaces. A great example of that might be is the, uh, the national locations. Right now today is a surface, surface parking lot, but it certainly could be a nicely urban development at that location. That has both high rise and, and open space.
Commissioner Tom? In Ryan, how many of these appear on public spaces? Public field? How many are public field?
These are all a hundred percent privately owned. Um, we have publicly owned spaces, which is probably still not shown on there is the, um, um, Sixth Street Park recently renamed. Um, right, so that encompasses both eastern, western sides as well as the southern side of, of the municipal hall. So this, this back could be probably further developed, should have all those connectivity spaces and locations there. Um, but for the most part, a lot of it is, is private ground. Open space.
Commissioner Redden?
Thank you. And following up on that comment, you may not have the tools to do this. From these are all private. When I look at the diagram of the buildings that are being just built and yet to be built here, I'm not sure there's any public space built into the town. Do you have, Ryan, me, you as a planners and as a city, do we have the tool to leverage your force? Open space?
We were working on some tools that incorporated that through some, uh, density bonuses or reductions in our requirements. And that had to do with, uh, you know, giving open space or percentages of open space in projects. Um, we, we don't have that tool available to us right now, but it's certainly something that, um, we, it's in our minds when we're thinking about these larger project sites. You can't really get it on a, on a, your property site, but if, when you have a larger context site that, that could that, um, open space as part of the project plan. What we're also looking at too is, is private open space from a vertical. Um, you know, those balconies are, are private spaces to residents. Activating rooftops, making green gardens, those, those are, are some of the newer, uh, private open spaces that we're seeing in the downtown.
Ryan, the thing about the open space too, and I won't get too deep into this, and I know it's a deeper policy discussion. But I would love to at some point resurrect that portion of the urban form basket plan, which was talking about density bonuses. I know that it got kind of wrapped up in a bigger conversation. Uh, and the plan didn't end up moving forward, but that is one part of the plan that I've heard people on the DRC and members of council actually express a lot of support for at least, uh, and not necessarily even in the way that it was designed previously. But at least talking about the concept and how we might be able to pull pieces out of that previous plan. We may not be able to pass it as one base group comprehensive, pompous type thing. But it might be something we can take certain key pieces out that do get a lot more agreement for members of the community and these two bodies. And see if we can move those forward, including the density bonus program.
Concerned with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, how's work here?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I agree with you completely on the density bonus program. It made complete sense to me and I know that this is something that I've talked to, uh, a few DRC board members about as well. Um, I would love to see that brought back. In fact, I think I spoke about it briefly at the last meeting we had. Um, so yeah, I would be very, very, um, um, interested in, in taking some kind of look at resurrecting that. Thank you.
Sounds good. And, uh, and just for the people watching at home, Councilor Katie was saying he agreed with me regarding, and I'm not just saying that because he agreed. But, um, but he was saying that he agreed about, uh, talking about the density bonus program and that he agrees with that sentiment that we should agree on in that policy discussions or just the people watching at home.
Thank you. Commissioner Lohm?
Thank you. Uh, I like having, um, lots of discussions like this because I believe this is, these are the design elements that can set some of the projects apart. Cause a lot of projects come forward dressed up as market rate housing, but because they lack certain design elements, um, they're really just student housing, right? So I think these are how we can change some of the quality and character, um, that we, that we want to see from these developments. It's coming up with bonus options that actually take into consideration some of the quality design aspects that we can push for. So thanks for having me on the conversation.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments on open space in general? We all like it.
Next slide.
Thank you, Mark.
On the ground, okay. So this is, uh, just kind of wrapping it up to, um, street scape design and amenities. Um, there's been a current focus on that for Mill Avenue as well as a CIP project for, for Fifth Street. Um, but it's also important to recognize, um, how people travel and get into downtown. You know, we've got some, some very roadways of ash, you know, out of the Fifth Street. Um, college is a unique location because it introduces or combines a town and town location where there's events, um, held there. Um, and then we have our, our secondary streets, um, Marble Forest, Sixth Street, Seventh Street. These are all, um, to buy that, that grid connectivity for, for Mill Avenue, um, to College Avenue. And ensuring that we kind of think about the continuity of some of these building designs that we're, we're, we're setting this right stage for how we want this pattern to be. And then making sure that that, that's followed through consistently through the whole lot. Um, we're trying to avoid some of the, you know, half hazard different design elements, but have some consistency when it comes to certain street locations and, and the, um, the type of street tree we're expecting to see. So some of those elements are, are emulated in the street scape design, now as materials. But now we're, we're kind of getting a renewed look at some of those, uh, design elements as we go through the Mill Avenue and street scape projects. So that'll be a, a, a big, um, component to how we record and move forward in, in other streets. And how, how they want the, the downtown development, street scape to work back in the future.
Thank you. And, and look, I, I love this conversation. One of the things that we've talked about committing $22 million to the downtown street scape. Because I, I've talked about this during council meetings, we have a lot more in the way of competition now than we had 20, 30 years ago before downtown Chamber, downtown Gilbert and active thriving downtowns. So it's one of the things I push back on when I see people off social media saying, oh, they're constantly spending money in the downtown. We redo the downtown street scape. I'm like, I think the last time the sidewalks were planted was when the Pope came in the late eighties. So we're not spending a lot of time in, I've done tons of, uh, refreshes that are going on. But if, if we want to make people come to the downtown and enjoy their experience and continue to come to the downtown and spend money, we have to spend this kind of money, update the segment speed to make sure that it's something that people today in the future are going to want to, uh, actually use. And as a, as a random note, uh, and I do think the density is part of that, quite candidly. Um, one of the things when I'm having conversations with a lot of, uh, restaurateurs and bar owners, I'm talking about bar owners who are higher in speakeasies and bars for people in their forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties. Is they're saying to me, one of the differences that separates your downtown from a lot of these surrounding cities is you actually have people who are working and living right in the downtown. For a lot of the other cities and towns, they're destinations. You have to drive there. Uh, but the difference in 10 people we're actually seeing, I, I can tell you, looking at Commissioner Redden, the number of people that I've actually talked to on that south side right around Milton University, who would I actually show them Mirabella? And they say, I didn't realize this was here. That makes me a lot more interested in putting a restaurant down here because I know there are people who can actually afford to eat here and will frequent my establishment. Knowing that all of that is there, that level of density and some of these new buildings that are coming in, I think they're going to really help us revitalize downtown mill, not just in terms of the street scape, but also the mix of restaurants and retail. Anyone else?
Well, Commissioner Redd. Commissioner Redd? I was promised.
I'm working another day, I promise. Appreciate that.
I, I think that wraps it up for this slide. Yes, uh, does, you have any other specific, uh, comments, topics on downtown development vision? Um, can certainly get into, um, future meeting days, we've got a schedule currently running out, December 17th and May 13th. These, these are the list of potential topics that came up in our previous meeting conversations. Also want to convince about North Tempe Scottsdale Road or more. Supporting other number of development opportunities in certain, uh, shopping centers could be had a list of few that some have been identified. Um, on some of those key urban form basket plan elements, like you just talked about, the bonus program. Or any other topics that, um, Councilor DRC have at this time or roll with us.
Thank you, Ryan. Does anyone else have anything under that other topic section, Commissioner Nohm?
You might even want to. I guess I do. Uh, one other topic might be, since we're talking about design guidelines, expanding the idea of design guidelines and expectations to other areas of the city. Cause there's a lot of things that are also being proposed parts of the city that aren't the downtown. And having that same expectation, uh, would be very useful. Plus tying those to the various character areas in these, in these, uh, parts of the city. Since not everything is downtown. So anyway, that's it.
In our, our character plans are, are ingrained in design principles, not specifically design guidelines, it's design principles. And so they provide us kind of a broad brush, a brush of what we heard from resident communities and what they want to see in their sections of, of the, of their neighborhood. Um, we're actually starting Character 6 coming next January, so we've got, then one more character to go and we're done with the entire city.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on, on that same topic as, uh, Commissioner, um, Miller mentioned, some residents have pointed out perhaps some opportunities, I'm trying to think. It's on the west side of Hayden, north of the 202. I know we're limited because the east side is not Tempe land. But the west side between, what is that, McAlips? So then south to the 202.
That's where I heard the right circle directions.
Commissioner Redden?
This, this may circle back too far to be a future meeting. Um, when we, when session was introduced, we discussed the word condo was used. And I think in all of these buildings, they're all for rent, which opens this issue of permanence and investment and student housing. Is there, do we have the tools or the way to encourage or demand more ownership terminal approaches to these dense buildings and just rent them?
I'll leave it to you, Jeff, Ryan.
Touch on that subject generally, but when we have the ability to do a development, I mean, we can have, um, one good example is the Union Tempe. As part of the development group, they are required to do the condominium plot for the site. Um, the concern still in the development community is that, that initial 10 years of, of risk and liability. So I think once some of these projects, buildings are getting past that 10 year stage, I think there's some opportunity that could be converting to condominiums. But I continue to ask and encourage, uh, developers to think about doing the condo flats so that they can have, uh, that opportunity to be a future portfolio in the future is something they can consider. But we can't mandate whether it's the water rent or force, you know, portion.
Commissioner Spears?
Yeah, just FYI, the financial community likes apartments and they don't like condominiums. And so it's much easier to see, it's very difficult to get condominiums.
Okay, anyone else, any other topics they'd like for a future meeting perhaps? Seeing none, I guess also since, uh, I can't turn my head anymore as the lights coming in. We can go ahead, let me just ask two, uh, since we're not talking at the time, anything else that anyone would like to talk about just for the good of the order? Uh, yes, Commissioner Lohm, right, right under the wire.
Thanks, sir. Uh, I just wanted to make a closing statement because I know I've been somewhat vocal to some of US council members. And, um, just wanted to, one, thank you for the opportunity that we all have a conversation like this. Cause I think it's important because I do think we have a vision and I'm not goes to development, obviously I do believe in a downtown core. But I do think it's good to take a breath every once in a while and just check in to make sure what we're doing is thoughtful. Because these decisions have a lot of those impacts, uh, on our quality of life. And, you know, so I think taking into consideration parking, quality of design, I'm just glad that we took a moment to actually discuss these topics to give a little more security to this company here. So just wanted to add to that.
Excellent, Commissioner Spears?
If I can, I know that because I'm not shy about talking of issues. And, um, I appreciate being in the same room and, and you guys hearing kind of things staff hears from them as well and talk. So I think that we can come to, if we know what you expect, then that helps us to watch. And given it means, thank you.
Commissioner Spears? Anyone else? Further comments or questions, just for the good of the order? Well, then seeing none, we can go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 5:49 PM. Once again, thank you staff for the presentations, very informative, very humble. Uh, thank you to the DRC and obviously thank you council for being here as well. We are adjourned, we'll see you in January. Thank you.
Thank you.